Good evening, we're going to call our meeting to order. Today is Thursday, March 21st, 2024. This is the Monroe Township Board of Education Monthly Meeting. Please join me in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Allen, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez. Ms. Belko.
Here.
Ms. Bora.
Here.
Ms. DePaine.
Here.
Ms. Fabiano. Mr. Gorham.
Here.
Ms. Ratner. Ms. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Gerby.
Here.
Mr. Tofano. We have a quorum.
Thank you.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published, an electronic notice provided by having the time, date, time and place thereof posted September 15th, 2023, and March 19th, 2024, at all schools, on the district website, Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the clerk of the municipality.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is our closed session resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects: harassment, intimidation, bullying; matters protected by attorney-client privilege, including proposed confidential settlement agreement involving student #94443; confidential personnel matter; superintendent's evaluation. Following the closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion? Move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll be in our closed session until approximately 7:15. Thank you. Good evening, we're back in our public session. Coming out of closed session, we do have a resolution to read. Whereas a dispute has arisen regarding the special education program for student #9443, and whereas the attorney representing the board on this matter and the superintendent have recommended resolution of this matter pursuant to the terms set forth in a settlement agreement, and whereas the settlement agreement calls for the expenditure of board funds for the 2023-24, 2024-25, and 2025-26 school years towards the cost of tuition and related services for an out-of-district program, and whereas the board finds that resolving this matter pursuant to the terms set forth in the settlement agreement is in the best interest of the district. Now therefore be it resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education that it is hereby approved the settlement agreement in this matter. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second. Second? All right, does anybody have any questions? No, Ms. Allen, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Gorham?
Here.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for the public Board of Education meeting from February 21st, 2024?
Motion.
Second.
Does anybody have any questions or corrections? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the next one is the closed session meeting of February 21st, 2024. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, are there any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, great, that's our meeting minutes. Our next item on our agenda is our student board member report. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you today?
Yes, I'm doing good. I hope you all are doing well. So we'll just get started with Woodland Elementary School. In celebration of Read Across America, Woodland School professional staff coordinated a portion of their teacher's favorite book to share with families. The link to their favorite book video clips can be found on the school website and is still available for families to explore and access for reading suggestions with their child or children. In addition, Mrs. Duskovich coordinated with the Monroe Township Mayor's Office, Council, Board of Education, Superintendent's Office, administrators, parents, and guardians to read to the students as guest readers. Ms. Duskovich coordinated with the media teacher at Mill Lake so that Woodland students were able to read to the students from Mill Lake remotely. Woodland also invited their own Monroe Township Middle School students to read to their 5th and 4th grade students, which also allowed for them to share their experiences as a new middle school student to their upper elementary students. They ended their week as a community of readers, reading together in the hallway as a school community for the last 15 minutes of their Read Across America celebration. Mr. Schultz scheduled Jump Rope for Heart with the students. This event raised money for the American Heart Association and teaches children the benefits of cardio fitness for the heart. Ms. Voiner and the PALS group created a rainbow arc that had to hold a cup of pennies for the 100th day of school. In observance of Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, students participated in a spirit week. PTO coordinated Monroe Township teachers playing basketball with the Harlem Wizards on Sunday, March 17th. In alignment with Woodland Elementary's Lego Log Rewards, the school earned the reward for the month, participating in a classroom cahoot to identify representative for the building, reward for March. Woodland has 10 students ready to compete in their school-wide cahoot focused on Woodland and Monroe-themed trivia. Next up is Oak Tree Elementary School. The month began with a week-long Read Across America celebration as well. Each day was a themed event that matched a Dr. Seuss story. The week ended with guest readers and their school-wide reading train. On March 7th, Oak Tree hosted a Maker's Space Night for Grade 2 students and their parents. Grade 2 students also took a field trip to Jenkinson's Aquarium on March 6th and 7th. On March 15th, winning classes from the PTA's Friday Frenzy Event were able to pie a teacher or silly string the principal at a school-wide assembly. The event with the entire school singing our new Oak Tree anthem. Oak Tree teachers played again against the Harlem Wizards on March 17th at a PTA fundraiser as well. Oak Tree students will also attend an Aliens Alive Assembly on March 25th, courtesy to the Oak Tree PTA. The month will end with Grade 3 students dancing the dance at Oak Tree's annual March Madness Basketball Tournament on March 28th. Next up, we have Applegarth. Throughout the month of March, students from MTHS, under the direction of Simran Singh, former Applegarth student, have been teaching a public speaking mini-course to Applegarth children, and they are loving it. The Monroe Marvels interviews are in the process of being scheduled. As a school-wide service learning project in collaboration with the Monroe Senior Center, their students are interviewing some of Monroe's amazing senior citizens. Students will write their biographies, which will be published in a book. The book will be donated to the Monroe Township Library and copies will go on sale. All proceeds will benefit the Monroe Township Senior Center. Applegarth is also celebrating Wellness Week. Students and staff with support from their Food Services Department are celebrating living a healthy lifestyle and making positive food choices. Applegarth is also celebrating Disabilities Awareness Week with different themed activities every day to encourage appreciation of all friends. March Madness Frenzy has also set in Applegarth. Their students are researching colleges and preparing for their March Madness Basketball Tournament coming up next week. The March Madness Tournament runs in conjunction with their Spring Food Drive. Can donations help students to earn points in the tournament? Thank you to all the families for their donations and best wishes to all of the Applegarth students in the tournament. Applegarth went through a rigorous interview process to be recognized as a national school of character. Thank you to the community members who participated in the interview process, and they'll find out in May. The PTA has sponsored multiple events this month. Applegarth had the Scholastic Book Sale, a Green Bagel Day, and Read Across America Day. Applegarth's PTA arranged for community members to come in and read to their students at the school. The PTA also sponsored their Friday Frenzy Assembly. After a month of activities at Applegarth, students were able to pie their teachers in the face and silly string their principal. Thank you to the PTA for all their efforts. Applegarth celebrated Maker Day on Friday, March 15th, where students rotated time in the cafeteria on their early dismissal day using ingenuity and creativity with various station activities. Several Applegarth staff members participated in the Harlem Wizards game as well on Sunday, March 17th. And additionally, Applegarth has kicked off its annual Fish Tank Competition. Student teams are busily designing activities to help improve climate change problems. Now moving on to Barkley Brook. Barkley Brook celebrated Read Across America Week in the beginning of March with a week of themed school spirit days, and the week began with a school-wide reading train where all students joined in for school-wide Dear, Drop Everything and Read, and students wore clothes that represented different Dr. Seuss books throughout the week. In preparation for Read Across America Week, the students spent the month of February listening to five specially-selected books selected for their grade level. During this week, each class was scheduled for a Battle of the Books in the library where they had to answer questions about each of these stories. The students received points for each correct answer. The battles were very close and very fun. It was a very fun, full week celebrating literacy. Grades 1 and 2 students have been following a rotating schedule in the Media Center where they have engaged in various STEM activities. Grade 1 students recently learned how to code using an app called Lightbot, and Grade 2 students learned to code using a codable robot root. Barkley Brook School is also celebrating Disabilities Awareness Month with School Spirit Week that began today, and during the next week, students will be invited to participate in themed days to celebrate all the ways students are unique. Next up is Brookside. Brookside celebrated Read Across America Week as well with a variety of activities which included themed days, Battle of the Books, and a March Madness Book Challenge. They also had an author's visit on February 27th. In February, the 3rd, 4th, and 5th grades participated in the Spelling Bee. The students have continued to do a great job supporting each other, and the students earned their second school reward, which was a school-wide cahoot booklet game. The student council at Brookside had a dress-up day on March 14th. Teachers dressed like students and students dressed like teachers. Brookside is collecting for the replenished food drive during the month of March as well. Next, we have MTMS. February 28th, Monroe Township Middle School hosted its annual art show. Students in all three grades displayed their wonderful artwork to show off their talents. March 7th and 8th, the middle school held its annual Hoops for Hearts to benefit the American Heart Association. Thanks to Ms. Misty Drake, we raised $32,400 this year for the American Heart Association. Last year, we were number 5 in the nation, and MTMS is hoping to surpass that and possibly be number 4 this year. March 8th, through MTMS's career grant, they held a career cafe focused on the engineering vocation. Engineers zoomed with their students to give them insight into what the engineering careers can look like. March 21st to the 23rd, MTMS Productions is presenting the performance of Shrek Jr. as their spring musical. They hope to see you all at one of their performances this weekend. And last but not least, MTHS. The juniors completed their NJGPA testing last week, and spring sports have started in full swing this week. Additionally, the Ro Kappa National Social Studies Honor Society is hosting a voter education week and voting simulation for seniors in collaboration with the Middlesex County Board of Elections and the League of Women Voters on Tuesday, March 26th and March 27th. Senior health classes will experience a concise presentation covering topics such as the voting process, voter registration, and much more. Following this presentation, students will engage in a mock election using actual voting machines. This hands-on experience aims to prepare students to participate in upcoming elections. Lastly, tonight, MTHS is hosting the CJMEA Band Festival, and on March 23rd is hosting the Winter Guard Home Show in which our amazing band students are performing in. Thank you all for listening this evening, and that is the end of the student district updates for this meeting.
Thank you, Sehaj. That was very comprehensive and detailed of what is going on in our schools, and as you can see, we have so much wonderful things. I just want to touch on a couple of things that you said that I think is amazing. We have such a wonderful parent associations in our elementary schools and throughout the district, and our teachers and our staff really engage with our parent volunteers, and together they raise so much money that's put back into the schools. So I think it was incredible on this past Sunday that all of the elementary school parent organizations participated in the Wizards game to raise money for each of their individual parent organizations, and the amount of staff administrators involved in that was really heartwarming to see how many of our staff from across the elementary schools and across the district participated in that. So it really was wonderful. Thank you for your report, and thank you for bringing us everything, every month that goes on in all of our schools. It really is great to hear so much.
My pleasure, thank you.
You're welcome. Our next item on our agenda is our public hearing of the 2024-2025 final budget. I turn that over to Ms. Allen.
Good evening. At our March 5th board meeting, we presented the tentative budget and held a public hearing. We will not repeat that presentation, but just touch on some of the highlights. The presentation is available on our website. On March 7th, the budget was submitted to the county for review. Both the executive county business administrator and the executive county superintendent have reviewed and approved our budget, including the additional spending proposal. As explained on March 5th, by maintaining the status quo and including some additional enhancements such as teachers and security, our budget exceeds the 2% tax levy cap. There are no new programs being added. Because we are exceeding the 2% tax levy cap, we must ask the voters to vote on April 16th on the additional amount, which is the additional spending proposal. Only the base budget will be voted on by the board tonight. It does not require voter approval. The base budget is capped at the statutory 2% tax levy increase plus an allowable healthcare adjustment. The base budget totals $151,951,710 and includes the general fund in the amount of $139,294,829, the special revenue fund in the amount of $1,465,710, and the debt service fund in the amount of $11,191,171. The additional spending proposal, which totals $2,729,586, requires voter approval on April 16th. It will appear as a separate question on the ballot. If the additional spending proposal passes, this amount is added to the 2% tax levy, and those programs and staff are added to the budget. They are not currently in the budget. The total combined tax increase, including the additional proposal to a home with an average assessed valuation of $332,281, is $24.17 for the year. It is very important to understand that this is completely up to the voters. If the additional spending proposal does not pass by majority of the voters, all personnel and programs on that ballot question are not included in the budget, and statutorily, we have no ability to reallocate them for the 25-26 school year. I'm sorry, the 24-25 school year. The school election date is April 16th. That's my report.
There's no presentation?
No.
No, okay. Okay, at this time, I will open the hearing on the budget. Anybody wishing to come and speak regarding just the school budget? You can come up to the podium if anybody that has any questions or comments. This is only regarding the final budget. Anyone? Good evening.
Good evening. Ms. Arminio, 9 Nathaniel Street. Monday, you had a finance meeting that was a half-hour meeting, I believe. And I'm just wondering how in a half-hour, because a lot of the deliberation is no longer going on at these public meetings to, I think, to the detriment of the public, but how do you have a half-hour finance meeting before the final budget on 154, approximately, if the proposal goes through? How do you do that in a half-hour for the people of this community with $150 million operating budget?
Ms. Arminio, the budget that we sent to the county was adopted by the Board of Education on March 6th.
That's correct.
There were no changes discussed at the meeting by the board members or requested. That budget was sent to the county. The county did not send back any changes, correct, Ms. Allen?
Correct.
There were no changes to the budget. So the budget was as, the budget that we have tonight, we're voting on the final budget, has not changed at all since it's been presented to us previously.
And the presentations, you know, didn't go into enormous detail. So I maintain my question that all, from the beginning of the presentation of the first budget until tonight, I think a lot of detail could have been exposed to the public. Again, you're asking us to go over cap, you're doing, we, a half-hour, again, on $154 million budget, isn't enough even if it stayed the same. You could have gone over in more detail some of the important aspects of the budget. I just feel that the transparency has been being diminished in the last few years of this administration. It should have been like a three-hour, you know, $154 million that you're asking the community to pay, which most of us want our educational system to be top-grade. But out of respect, we should really know exactly what's going on in real detail, and I maintain that 150, that 30 minutes of, I don't know how well budget discussion went. I actually didn't understand the timing, and I got here at 7:00. I think it was over by 7:00. So that's another thing. The times for these committees keeps changing. It's all over the place. The committee dates, the timing, it's just, people don't have a handle on what's going on. And I think you're asking a lot of this community and not giving us enough information.
Thank you. I do believe that our presentation was very thorough and detailed with what we were presenting. The budget process began back in the fall, and I know that it has been spoken about at various meetings, including many finance committee meetings. Everything that we do discuss here as a board on a monthly basis and in committees is, goes into the creation of the budget. I believe what we were presented was very detailed. The information was all posted to the website. That evening, we had handouts. I believe, I don't believe we've given out those, all of the handouts previously to the public during the presentations, and it's been something that has been requested of members of the community that come here that say, "I've come here and I shouldn't have had to print out the handouts." So we actually made a great effort that evening to ensure that anybody that came to the meeting actually had the handouts that were on the website to begin with. So I do believe we are trying to explain to the community. It's been discussed at various meetings, various committee meetings, and our committee meetings are recorded. They are posted to the website. The schedules are there. And I just want to let the public know that we are not required, but we continue to do it. We're not required to have the public at our committee meetings. It's not a quorum meeting. It is not an official Board of Education meeting. It does not even require that we tell the community when we're meeting. This board has been very clear that we want it to be transparent with what we are doing. We do have discussions at committee meetings in public. We publish a public notice to the community on our website and on our Facebook page when we are having committee meetings and we're meeting, and we do invite the public to come to those meetings. Is there anybody else wishing to speak on the budget? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing on the budget. Ms. Allen, do you have a resolution to read?
Be it resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education that the 2024-25 general fund budget be adopted in the amount of $139,294,829, and a general fund local tax levy in the amount of $117,447,992, and a special revenue fund budget in the amount of $1,465,710, and a debt service budget in the amount of $11,191,171, and a debt service local tax levy in the amount of $10,909,834, whereby the 2024-25 budget totals $151,951,710, and be it further resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education includes in the budget the appropriation of surplus in the amount of $3,186,704. Be it further resolved that the Monroe Township Board of Education includes in the budget the adjustment for increased costs of health benefits in the amount of $477,912. The additional funds will be used to pay for the additional increases in health benefit premiums. Whereas the Monroe Township Board of Education has been notified of state aid amounts, and whereas such state aid amounts are, for 24-25, the categorical special education aid is $7,593,810, and for 2024-25, the categorical security aid is $681,073, and for 2024-25, the categorical transportation aid is $3,999,704, and for 2024-25, the debt service aid is $281,336. And whereas the Monroe Township Board of Education has estimated a state aid amount pursuant to application, and for 2024-25, the estimated extraordinary aid amount is $397,484. And whereas Policy Number 6471 and NJAC 6A:23A-7.3 provides that the Board of Education shall establish in the annual school budget a maximum expenditure amount that may be allotted for travel and expense reimbursement for the 2024-25 school year. Now therefore be it resolved that the Monroe Township Board of Education hereby establishes the school district travel maximum for the 2024-25 school year at the sum of $165,500. And be it further resolved that the school business administrator shall track and record these costs to ensure that the maximum amount is not exceeded. And be it further resolved that members of the Monroe Township Board of Education authorize and approve a transfer of $400,000 of anticipated retained earnings from the proprietary Falcon Care Fund Early Childhood Enrichment Fund as a revenue source in the 2024-25 general fund budget. And whereas due to the priorities of student and staff safety, maintenance of current programs and staff and capital improvement needs as set forth in the board's budget philosophy resolution, the board is budgeting to maximum spending authority. Be it further resolved that there should be a separate proposal to raise an additional $2,769,586 for general funds in the same school year, 2024-25. These taxes will be used exclusively for the retention of courtesy busing per NJSA 18A:39-1, students who live less than 2 miles in grades K through 8 and less than 2.5 miles for students in grades 9 through 12. After-school busing, athletic transportation, school-sponsored co-curricular extracurricular activity expenditures, and school-sponsored athletic supplies and materials. The separate proposal also includes the addition of one autism teacher, one autism paraprofessional, one ESL teacher, one ESL paraprofessional, one business teacher, one technology education teacher, one security officer, design of roof replacement at Mill Lake Elementary School, and Phase 2 of special services parking lot refurbishment. Approval of these taxes will result in a permanent increase in the district's tax levy. These proposed additional expenditures are in addition to those necessary to achieve the New Jersey student standard, student learning standards. Now therefore let it be resolved that the superintendent of schools and the business administrator, board secretary, file the required documents with the executive county superintendent. Whereas the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education have approved the additional spending proposal, ballot language to be as follows: Resolved that there should be an additional $2,769,586 for general funds for the ensuing school year, 2024-25. These taxes will be used exclusively for the retention of courtesy busing per NJSA 18A:39-1, students who live less than 2 miles in grades K through 8 and less than 2-point miles for students in grades 9 through 12. After-school busing, athletic transportation, school-sponsored co-curricular extracurricular activity expenditures, and school-sponsored athletic supplies and materials. The separate proposal also includes the addition of one autism teacher, one autism paraprofessional, one ESL teacher, one ESL paraprofessional, one business teacher, one technology education teacher, one security officer, design of roof replacement at Mill Lake Elementary School, and Phase 2 of special services parking lot refurbishment. Approval of these taxes will result in a permanent increase in the district's tax levy. These proposed additional expenditures are in addition to those necessary to achieve the New Jersey student's learning standards.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Belko, seconded by Ms. Bora. Does anybody have a question? Motion made by Ms. Belko, seconded by Ms. Bora. Does anybody have any questions? Right? May we get a roll call, please?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Mr. Gorm.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. DePain.
Can I make a comment before I give my answer?
No, I, I asked for questions or comments.
Oh, you didn't say board questions or comments.
I, I asked the board.
I'm sorry.
I didn't feel like anybody wanted to.
Public forum's open. It's closed. Public, yeah, public forum's closed. You asked if we had any questions.
I asked if anybody had any questions.
I thought you meant anybody else. I didn't.
No, that was, that public hearing was.
I misunderstood. Can I make a comment?
We're in the middle of a vote. If it's short.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Okay.
After the last meetings I attended on Tuesday, I went home, took the board budget, looked at it, and felt that something didn't feel right. I had concerns now that I didn't think that I had. I didn't have a complete picture of what the budget entailed. There is nothing more important than supporting students by providing robust mandated programs, as well as ensuring those programs take place in a safe, secure environment. The proposed budget punts the responsibility of ESL and special education programs to the voters instead of taking the responsibility of supporting these programs in our proposed budget. Additionally, if school security is recommended by the superintendent, we should not be gambling with this recommendation. We need to make arrangements now in our budget by supporting these student achievements and safety items, and signal to, to the community that how important these are for our children. Asking the community to vote on these items is irresponsible, and I can't support punting that responsibility. We just need to do a little bit better. So I'll be voting no.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Gerbi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Right, the next item on our agenda are our committee reports. The committees wishing to give a report. Mr. Tofano.
The BGNT meeting was Tuesday. The first item on the agenda was the ESIP discussion with Honeywell. Caroline Jackson and her team from Honeywell did a second presentation in regards to the ESIP program. The members of the BGNT were in favor of the program, but wanted to afford the finance committee the opportunity to review the program before making a motion to proceed. The board president, Ms. Gerbi, wanted all bases covered before making this decision for our district. So hopefully, Ms. Belko will put that on her committee next month. Okay. Second item on the agenda was the Applegoth School Project update. Mr. Tagg informed the board that this sum of the roof on the nineteen thirty-six building will be completed, and partial work on the electrical system will be performed. He also stated that all work is slated to be complete on Applegoth in September or October of two thousand twenty-five. The third item on the agenda was the high school digital sign. Mr. Tagg informed us that at first, it was, thought that it was a hard, a software problem, but later determined that the, that it was a module issue. The manufacturer does not make parts for this sign, but is willing to look into finding a module for us that is needed, if they can locate the part. A new sign will cost approximately sixty thousand dollars. The committee stressed the importance of a sign at the, on the high school grounds. Mr. Tagg will update the committee of any new information pertaining to the sign issue. That was it.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Tofano? All right. Do we have another committee report?
I have two. I'm, I'm reading Katie's and Carmen's.
Okay.
On Tuesday.
I have an objection to her reading Carmen's report. She's not a member of that committee.
I was.
I'm just stating that for the record.
Carmen asked me to. I was, I was present that night. Could have taken it for.
You don't need a quorum for a committee meeting. You're not on the committee.
Oh, my God.
Okay.
How about you, Madam President? I mean, her report is here.
I, I'll allow it.
All right. I'll read Katie's. I am on that committee.
And this is the Legislative Action Committee.
Yeah, Legislative Action, Community Engagement Committee met. We discussed the recent. We just, is that better? Yeah. We discussed, I lost my place. We discussed the recent NJSBA County meeting where Senator Vin Gobal spoke to us about teacher shortages and issues with fair funding. He seemed to take a pretty adamant stance that the formula needed to be changed, especially since a lot of the districts in his area, and he's in Monmouth County, were negatively impacted this year. We discussed issues surrounding the teacher shortage that we noticed, such as certification procedures, and Ms. Ratner provided various updates from the Legislative Committee. She mentioned that a statewide portal will be possibly formed for substitutes and certified teachers. She said there was also a discussion about S four two zero nine, where it was stated that they wanted to make April elections similar to November. It was also said that there was a discussion about allowing for putting a second question on the ballot for the following year. And that's that report. Okay? Do you want me to do the other one?
Does anybody have any questions on that report? No? Okay. Sure. This is the policy report?
Yes.
Policy Committee, three nineteen. The committee, committee met to discuss the policies listed in Alert two thirty-two. The New Jersey State Board of Education re-adopted NJAC six-eight dash colon seven, Managing for Equity in Education with Revisions. NJAC sixty-four colon seven dash one dot one et sequential provides rules governing equity and educational programs to guarantee each student equal access to all school districts, equal access to educational program services and benefits of their educational district, regardless of the student's housing status, socioeconomic status, or immigration status, in addition to any protected category previously included in NJAC sixty-six-eight colon seven dash one dot one parentheses A. NJAC six A colon seven dash one dot one parentheses A also includes the protected classes listed in New Jersey's law against discrimination, NJLAD, such as race, creed, color, national origin, ancestry, age, marital status, civil union status, domestic partnership status, affectual or sexual orientation, genetic information, pregnancy or breastfeeding, sex, gender identity or expression, religion, disability, atypical hereditary cellular or blood trait, service in the armed forces of the United States, or nationality. This revised NJAC six A dash seven dash one period one parentheses lowercase A expands the list of the protected categories that were previously included in NJAC six A colon seven dash one dot one parentheses lowercase A, and now includes the additional protected categories currently recognized in NJLAD at NJAC ten dash five dot one et cetera. To align directly with the revisions of NJAC six A dash colon seven, Strauss Esme has removed the list of all the protected categories throughout the policy, policy and regulation guides, and replaced the list with the phrase, "The protected categories listed on NJAC six A colon seven dash one dot one" in parentheses A. This also avoids repeating the complete list of all the protected categories in multiple places throughout a policy or regulation guide, and avoids the need to revise these policy and regulation guides if the list of protected classes is revised in the future. Many of these policies and regulation guides are mandated, as they are required to be adopted by statute or administrative code, or by the New Jersey Department of Education Comprehensive Equity Plan, CEP. Needs assessment as required documentation or evidence to substantiate compliance with the provision in the CEP. A total of eighteen policies were discussed and are on the March twenty-first, twenty-four, two oh two-four board agenda for the first read. In the interest of time, Regulation five four four zero honoring student achievement was tabled for the April Policy Committee Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
If I may, I have a question for the Legislative Action Committee.
Sure.
I was watching the video today, and there was a discussion on the way the question is, I think Gail just mentioned that there is a possibility that they will allow that question to come in November. But just pertaining to us right now, I heard your comments, Mrs. Gerbi, saying that if that question does not pass, my understanding was, because this is fairly a new bill, so we are all still trying to understand, my understanding was that it does not allow us to go to the town. But I heard you say that we can go to the town and ask for help for the two-point-seven, seven million dollars. Is that, did I hear you right in that?
Well, what I had said, and I had asked this question of our board attorney, Mr. Gagliardi, was where exactly can we get the money if the voters do not approve that question? It cannot come from our budget. We cannot appropriate any money in our budget. We are allowed to get the money for that, to fund that, from any other outside source, including our municipality. Is that correct, Mr. Gagliardi? So while we, we cannot reappropriate money inside our budget to, to pay for any of that, if we got donations, or sponsor, or we could go out and ask our municipality to, perhaps go out to bond for two-point-seven million dollars to restore our busing and the other items that were listed in the resolution that would not be able to be funded.
And is it also a possibility, like we got the one million dollars from Senator Greenstein for Applegoth, is that also a possibility where our township government and the board government can ask the state level or the county level government to help us? And can they donate money towards this?
Well, they can appropriate money. And I was going to talk about this in my board president's report. This week, I testified, as well as I know Ms. Ratner did, and Dr. Chanley was there. I think there were some members of our public that did, Mr. Perab, or Dr. Perab. We, I did go to the Senate Budget and Appropriations Committee meeting, and I gave testimony about our needs here, the difficulty staying under the two percent cap due to inflation rates and various other reasons, as well as the lack of fair funding. And I did ask them specifically to appropriate two-point-seven million dollars to Monroe for our needs. And I also asked for funding for kindergarten as well, because the estimate that the administration had told me when I asked was approximately fifteen million dollars to bring full-day kindergarten to Monroe. And obviously, if we can't fund what we currently have in our budget and have to go out to the voters, we don't have fifteen million dollars to bring full-day kindergarten here in our budget. So I did ask the Senate Committee, Budget Committee, to please consider that in this, in this budget that they are going to be approving as appropriating money to our district. There were several districts there, as well as many other groups asking for appropriations in the budget. So I think it was great that we had representation there this year, asking them for the money as well. I know last year, when the referendum failed, Senator Greenstein added in a resolution into the budget appropriating one million dollars to Applegoth. That kind of, that coupled with the ROD grant was what was the precipitous for the shared services agreement with the township. So we're, we are doing our part. I'm very excited that we created a Legislative Action Committee, and that we followed through with what we said we were going to do all year long, which was put out a letter-writing campaign and wait until the website opened up and put our names in to go down and testify. It's a very, it's a very, it, it seems as a very formal process that they have, where you have to put your name in, and they tell you on the website that you cannot come unless you are selected, and they will get back to you. However, we did have many people that put their names in and were never contacted by email, and then that day, they were calling their names. Because I was watching, they were live proceedings, and I just had it playing in my kitchen all day long, listening to all of the testimony. And they did call people that I knew from our community that weren't there, and when I reached out, they said I never got notification. One of them was, was Dr. Perab, and he actually got in his car and drove down, and he was the last person to testify yesterday, which was good. But I think it's really important that the committee does continue to let everybody know what legislation's up, and when we can go and testify, and members of the community can go testify, that, that's the best place that we can go to ask for, for consideration. And we're not the only district there. So the fact that we are there and we are in front of them, we're getting, we're getting our voices heard.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Does anybody have any other questions for Ms. DePain? You have your committee report, Ms. Belko. Sure. Curriculum Committee?
Oh, yeah. I'll start with curriculum. So Curriculum Committee met on Tuesday evening. Meeting started at five-thirty and was another robust meeting. We did take the full hour. I, I'd like to thank that committee for, for all their time. We did review a few things. First up was Mr. Gail Snyder, and he gave us a report on a new curriculum for the middle school, and it's a class called Theater Arts, and it will be an elective that will be allowed to be taken or buddied up with some music curriculums that are there, allowing our talented theater students to participate in both music and theater. And the class is going to really go through some theater basics, some acting skills, lots of theater elements, understanding the science behind the different theaters and the different things that are there, understanding, understanding Shakespeare. They will be putting on a production, including scene design and basic scripts, and then they'll also be taught audition tricks and trades. We have a robust theater program in the district, both at the middle school and at the high school. So this will serve our students really well, and they're very excited about it. And it opens up the door for the students to also participate in the high school theater productions, as well as the curricular class at the high school, as well as there are theater clubs throughout the, through the district. So we're very excited for that class to be added to our middle school choice for things. The other thing that Mr. Snyder gave us an update on was the interest in the trip that we were invited to, to Hawaii with our, but not, not just our band, who went many years ago, but also our core students. And there were over a hundred and forty students that showed interest in that trip. So we're very excited that Monroe Township High School will be represented in Hawaii again for, and you'll have to forgive me, but I do forget why they were going. Dr. Lehman, if you can remember what the, it's, it's a particular celebration, and it escapes me, because it's on last month's minutes.
It's, the Department of Defense invited us as a part of recognizing veterans in Hawaii.
Yes, okay. And that, that would be March of twenty twenty-five. So that'd be a year from now. So the, they, we were given a report about what it would, what the bottom line cost of the district would be, and it's actually going to be well under five thousand dollars out-of-pocket expense for the district, and that's to provide the chaperones and the nurse that needs to go on the trip and things like that. So it was a very, much more detail can be found if you go on the website and, and watch the committee meeting. So that information was good. Then we had a curriculum presentation by Danielle Drust, who is, we are taking a biotechnology class, and we are moving it from a half-year class to a full-year class. And the, the units are going to include a lot of different things within the biotechnology realm. And we talked about the, the, some of the units are going to include infectious and chronic diseases, medicines and vaccines, genetically modified plants and animals, ethical considerations and longevity. I think they go hand-in-hand with genetically modified plants and animals, career readiness and preparation, as well as economic impact and the role in pop culture. So we had a, a nice discussion about that curriculum, and they're very excited to be offering that as a full-year program. We did discuss about bringing in with biotech. New Jersey has a large industry in biotech here, and it would be great to reach out to the businesses that we do have in the state that do biotech and bring them in. So Ms. Drust was very open to that idea and very open to exploring that. So we're excited for that, and hopefully, some of that can come through. The other thing that was brought up for curriculum for chemistry, grade ten, and basically, this was so that our chemistry program is aligned with the latest standards, which are the twenty-twenty-two science standards in the state of New Jersey. We use the next-gen science standards, which is national, and we're, we're, we always meet those, and we sometimes do exceed them. And they'll do, be doing chemical reasoning, structure, experiments. There's a program called FET simulations, and I, forgive me, I forget what the acronym stands for. However, it's where they can actually watch a lab experiment happen, right on, you know, the computer, and they can see all the different steps. And we would do that in instances where it would probably not be safe to do those experiments in, here in the high school, or in the classroom with. students around. So I think that's kind of an awesome, an awesome class as well. Chemistry, chemistry is fun. If you know anything about chemistry, it's definitely fun. The other items we talked about was the, we were given a presentation by Dr. Higgins from the high school about our final exams and what we've done to, in, look at our final exams, look at the data for our finals exams, and drill down. So we, just for information's sake, we had 13,417 finals taken last year. They broke those things down into content and subject categories, grade categories, teacher categories, and student categories, and they looked at all the details of what those things did. We put some things, some implementations this year in place to sort of mitigate some of the issues that were brought up at, at previous curriculum committee meetings. One of them was, we tightened up the scheduling of people into higher-level classes, making sure that we're putting children who are appropriate into the higher-level classes if need be, giving them those opportunities because of our space issues and because we don't have the ability to just say, oh, well, this, this AP or honors class is a little too much, and we're in September, and I don't think I'm going to be able to pass, I, I want to go to the regular class. We don't have the room, and so we have, you know, so when people pick the classes, we have to do that. Not to say that there aren't mitigating circumstances, special circumstances if a student needed to. The principal and the guidance council would work together to see what we needed to do, but that was one of the things. The other thing was, they're doing spiraling lessons throughout the year in the, in the high school, and Dr. Higgins reported to us that the students he meets with on a regular basis talked about the spiraling lessons and really thought that that was a great way to allow them to kind of go back and say, oh, yeah, this, this, we, we learned this, but this is now related to this, and this is, we, this is the foundation we built on, keeping that knowledge and that information current and all, and ready for them, so that as they take their finals, this isn't like, oh, my God, I learned this in September and I don't remember. Relating everything back. So I, that is a great thing to do for them as well. So it's, I'm excited to see what's going to happen in June with our students for the June exams. Then we had a, a report, and this, you can see more details on this, on the, on the meeting, is we had a report from Mr. Maralta, from our signs that we do outside, so we have that information as to how we're doing, and our sponsors, and we have several sponsors from our district that are professional partners with us, either have signs up, or they've sponsored certain programs in the district, and we have the information for that. We, advertising and sponsorship revenues, about $10,000. Our enrichment program's about $3,000, and our club co. For, which is, I believe, projected profit, because that program is just getting started. It's a mid-school year program, am I right?
Yeah, I mean, that's what it'll be.
Yeah.
It's just happening now.
Yeah, it's happening now. So we have
Everybody's paid.
A protection of about $6,000 on that program, for total projections, about $20,000 for those. So with those programs that we're offering are not costing the district money, but they are giving us incredible enrichment programs for our students for the summer, as well as also during the school year. So that's great. Then we also had some information about what classes are going to be offered for the preliminary schedule for summer of 2024, and there will be some new offerings, some different things, so we had that report as well. More details can be found on the committee meeting. And that's my curriculum committee report, Mrs. Kirby.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Ms. Belko? All right, are there any other committees that need to report? Oh, Ms. Belko, Finance.
I'd like to report on the Finance Committee. So the Finance Committee, we reviewed a few things with that. We reviewed our attorney invoices for December. We had some invoices, the invoices for December was, were about 15,000, and then the January invoice, which we saw a nice decrease, in about half, was about $8,000. We had a lot of special things that were going on in 2023, 2024, that are starting to get resolved, so we'll see a lot of those invoices be reduced for, for us. We also reviewed the bill list, and that was, there were some very good questions from Mr. Payne, and those questions were answered. Please watch the Financial Committee report, as well as we, Ms. Allen talked about, talked to us, excuse me, about our shared service agreement with the server for the township, which we're really excited about. It's going to allow the meetings, our meetings to be out there, for the public, for anybody who may not have cable, may not have VHS, may not have Comcast, the different channels, so we're doing that up again. And it's going to give us an opportunity to do a few other things. And again, Mr. Maralta gave a really good explanation of a lot of that. I would not do it justice if I tried to explain it here. We have a GovDeals update. We sold some buses for the tune of about $10,000. No, a little more than that. I'm sorry. I can't remember. I didn't write, for some reason, I didn't write that number down. My apologies.
Sixty-something.
Thanks, Gil. So we, we have bus sales. We sell the buses after they're no longer usable for transportation for the students. And then we did review the school photography contract for the high school, for the undergrads and the grads, and that is up on the agenda for tonight for us to review and vote on as a district. And that's my Finance Committee report.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do have one.
Sure, Ms. Bora.
The, the contract for the school photography, the new company is there, but there were blanks in it. So is there, was there any, and I did watch the meeting today to make sure I kind of, I don't believe any amount was mentioned. There was a general comment that this is cheaper than the previous one, but was there any comparative numbers shared with the committee?
I think there's no sitting fees. There, so there, which is previous, we've had, like for the senior pictures, there's no sitting fees. There's
Can we pick up?
Yes, please.
Over $200, I think.
Yeah, there are, there are a lot of packages available, that they have prices.
Which are less than $200. Oh, I see that.
They have prices on there.
I see 94. All right, that's it.
Yep.
That's enough.
Does anybody have any other questions? And I think that's a testament to, you know, what the board, board members do along with the administration. You know, that was, something that was brought up was the cost that parents incur for pictures at the high school. Many of us, our parents, you know, had experienced that. And we brought those concerns and questions to the administration, and they went out and they found a quote for us that is cheaper with another company. So that is, that is exactly what we as board members are supposed to be doing and working collaboratively with the administration to do that. So I, I think this is very good, especially even through curriculum as well. You know, we had heard from parents and community members about final exams, and we raised the questions in curriculum, and Dr. Higgins came and did, he spoke to us in September. He said he was going to do a deep dive into it, and he gave an update at the Curriculum Committee meeting with what he found and what they're implementing this year. So it really is a great collaboration between the board members requesting things and the administration following through with it to, to make a real difference in, in our schools. So does anybody have anything else on our committee reports?
I have the Personnel.
Oh, yes, Ms. Bora, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. The Personnel Committee met on March 18th. The board members in its attendance besides me were Mr. Tofano, Ms. Scott, Mr. Gorham, Mrs. Kirby, and the administrators in attendance were Dr. Chanley and Dr. Lehman. We reviewed the current openings in the district. At the time of the meeting, we had 11 vacancies, one due to a leave, one due to retirement, three due to transfer within the district, and six due to resignation. Of the 11 open positions, it is notable that four are for bus drivers. There were three exit surveys reported for this month, and all stated retirement as a reason to leave. The committee started the discussion on the contract renewal for the MTBOE Educational Support Staff Association. We had the Director of HR join us briefly in this meeting to give us some clarifications on the existing contract. This is a work in progress. Dr. Chanley proposed a new schedule for staff contract renewals going forward. This would help spread out the work of HR over three months, giving them ample time to complete and offer 1,200 employment contracts, employment offers, and as per the schedule, March Personnel recommendations will include non-affiliated central office administrators and administrators. April Personnel Recommendations will include tenured, certified staff, and May Personnel Recommendations will include non-tenured, certified staff, paraprofessionals, drivers, security, MTEA secretaries, MTBOEA, MTBOE SSA, and Teamsters, if that negotiation, contract negotiation is over by then, otherwise that could be pushed to June. The committee saw no, no concerns with the schedule, and as, as a result, the first set of renewals, renewal approvals are on the agenda tonight. Some community members reached out with concerns about the staff renewals being done before the budget vote next month. I would like to address that and emphasize that these positions are in the budget that was approved tonight. This is the part of the budget that meets the tax levy gap and is not going to change as a result of the outcome of the vote. Most of the increases in salaries are contractual increases. The vote next month will impact the programs listed under the 2.77 million dollar question, which is courtesy busing, after-school sports and clubs, et cetera, and that are considered over adequate by the, by the state. If this budget question fails, we cannot move money from administrative staff salaries towards this program, and I, you just reconfirm that for me. We will need to find this money outside of the school budget to continue those programs and offerings. So I will reiterate to the community that this committee and the board is very cognizant of the budget situation, and this schedule change is not going to impact the present state of the budget or programs. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Bora? Yes, Mr. Payne?
Well, Ms. Bora, and to Dr. Chanley, the people that we're approving this evening, the administrators, were all their evaluations done already? I know they have to be done before we can
That is correct. Thank you very much.
Does anybody have any other questions? Okay. Thank you for your report, Ms. Bora. The next item on our agenda is our public forum. This is for agenda items only. If anybody has any questions or comments or wants to address the board on anything on our agenda for this evening, please come to the podium. You have four minutes. Please state your name and municipality for our records. Good evening.
Good evening. Joe DePain, Monroe. I got a question. On your separate question, you say athletic transportation. What are you talking about, the late bus?
Uh, Dr. Chanley, did you want to answer that?
So in answer to, directly to your question, it would not be the late buses, although I'm going to further respond. It would not be the late buses, what athletic transportation means transporting our athletes when they're not practicing or have games, matches, or meets at home. However, if I may expand upon that, after-school busing is part of our clubs and extracurricular activities. That is also part of the special question. I just wanted to clarify that.
You're, you're not talking about, I'm a football coach, and another thing, when we go, just the football team
I'm, I'm talking about that.
We, we have eight buses, plus anything else, but you're, you're talking about, hey, practice is over, if I'm getting this right, practice is over, you got to get home now.
There are, will be no after-school transportation for sports.
We don't, we don't currently
We don't currently do that right now.
Our, our athletes home after practice.
Right now, athletic transportation only includes when we go away for a meet competition, for event.
All right, so then, unless I'm really not getting this, your football team has a game. They're going to go play us in North Brunswick. How do kids get in there?
They will either be driven by the parents, or if
Well, you're opening yourself up for a big lawsuit. And we, because everybody's sue happy. So if, because what's going to happen, four kids are going to get in a bu, on a car, come on, I'll take yous. They have, God forbid, they have an accident. You're really thinking. And something just came about today, th, this is something good, at Rutgers, they get a, they did a Give Back Day. Everybody from the college president to the AD, to the professors, to the cafeteria workers, all threw in money to athletics to help out. It's an idea, how you, because you said, we got to figure out how to get this money. Just put it out there. Start from the top. Everybody give X amount of dollars.
Vote, yes.
You might be able to fund all this stuff. But my bigger question was the athletics, how you get the port gets there. Thanks.
And, and I think our answer is perhaps the community can, can support the referendum if they choose to give, for an average assessed house of $330,000, I believe the increase in annual taxes is $24 for the entire year, and, and that covers that, that busing as well. So, you know, hopefully the community sees the value in that, as you do. Thank you for bringing that up. And if the community values that, we hope that they will vote accordingly, and the increase in the taxes for all of that, for the busing, the transportation, for the athletics, for the courtesy busing, for the clubs, activity supplies, and the list of staff that we want to increase. It's not, we're not looking to cut any staff, and that's really important to understand. This would be, th, these were new staffing, the list of new staff. But like I said, on an average assessed house, we're asking for an increase of $24 for the entire year per family. So hopefully our community feels as strongly as you, and that they will come out and support it. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Jorge Torres from Janesburg, New Jersey. It's not a comment on the agenda, but I
This public forum is only for agenda items only?
I know, but I wanted to ask kindly, is, is a comment on the agenda. We, the meeting starts super late, and it is parents here that were able to arrive and want to see if we can do public comments. I just wanted to ask kindly the board if it's possible, that's it.
Now, I
Because we have parents here, and I know it's going to be super late, and the meeting has started late, so I want to see if there's any possibility that we can have public comments before.
Unfortunately, we have a policy that dictates our agenda, and I would have to follow the agenda this evening. This is our public forum for agenda items only. We do have another public forum. Our meeting did start promptly at 6:30 as scheduled, so it was on time this evening.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anybody else wishing to speak on agenda items only? Good evening.
Good evening. Okay. This is about the committees again. In the past, now, not everything needs to stay in the past, but there are things that are done well, and if we find things that aren't done well, I get it that we change them and make them better. However, committee meetings, the board members for years have previously noted that one-hour scheduled committee meetings were insufficient to discuss school districts and matters of finance, curriculum, policy, buildings, and grounds. I was, the, the committee meetings have also been that the board president was able to have five people at each committee, which can spread out all of the members of the board, so everybody has an impact in representing the community. I mean, all of the board members on this board represent all of the people in the community. So having five members go to, having five members appointed to each committee is essential for the public to be represented. And it was also, for many, many years, probably for decades, that an alternate was selected on, for the committees. So in other words, if someone, because it happens frequently, has another obligation, and there will only be four members or less on the committee, an alternate would be called so they can attend, because it's about representation of the community, not about a small majority always having, always making all the decisions. It's about everyone, and every board member has equal value on each committee. And the fact that someone wasn't on a committee, wasn't named to a committee, but there were, I think there were two or three, I, I went to the committee meetings on Monday, and there were, I think, less than four people at that committee meeting, and another member decided to sit in. There is nothing wrong with that. In fact, I appreciate Mr. Payne for taking her personal time and sitting in to be a witness to the deliberations that are so important to this community. So to say that someone isn't on the committee, isn't scheduled on the committee, to me, is an anathema to our oath and to the representation of this community. So having said that, the transport, transparency, again, and respect for some board members and members of this community seems to be devolving with this administration, reducing the public's ability to witness the function and deliberation of this governing body. We're leaving too many decisions to a small majority and, and keeping the minority out on a, on a lot of things. The board meeting, I'm sorry, I have the floor, I believe, Mr. Tofano. We, some of the other things that, that the transparency is, is being taken away from the community. There used to be multiple cameras for public meetings where There used to be multiple cameras for public meetings where people in the community could see the speakers. Now you only see our backs. So it diminishes the quality of the speakers that come up here. We remove the ability to copy and download and preserve public video meetings. Presently, again, the board has reduced the committees to 30 minutes when we're getting bigger and bigger and we have greater needs. And the, again, I would like to see reinstated alternates on the committees for when there are less than five and that an alternate could be taken. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arminio. And I'm going to address some of what you've said, because this board has, again, as I've said, brought a lot of transparency to our district. Before I was elected to the Board of Education, committee meetings were held in a very small, tight conference room at the board office. They were not recorded, there were no minutes taken. Since coming on the board here and came back out of COVID, we, I as the policy chairperson, brought forth the policy and asked the committee at that time and the board to change the policy to record all committee meetings and have them posted onto the website. That is something that we continue to do now. There is a, there, when I became board president, there were a lot of things that I saw that the district was not lawfully doing, and I brought these to the attention of the board. One of the things is we have to ensure that we do not reach a quorum at our committee meetings. We have Ms. Scott as our Jamesburg representative to be our representative for high school issues, high school matters. If we are discussing in committee things that do not span over to the high school, our quorum is five. That is why we have different numbers on different committees. Something such as curriculum, finance, that goes across all of the schools in the entire district, we can have a higher number of committee members at. There are times where we have four members, because we don't want to have five, because we're not discussing something, that we would have, would be a quorum of six. So that is something that I know I have discussed with the board attorney when I took over as a president, that that was a concern, and that's how we have managed our committee meetings. Our committee meetings are at the discretion of our committee chairs. We are not required, as a board, to have committee meetings monthly. If the chair decides that a meeting does not need to take an hour, we have been reducing that. There have also been times where we have scheduling conflicts. You have to understand, we have our administration that we have at these meetings, and everybody has scheduling. It's very difficult to schedule 10 board members or five board members at a time and the administration. Everybody has things going on in their life, and to try to get everybody together on different days, sometimes it's challenging. Generally, we have two nights of committee meetings. There are times where the administration has asked us to consolidate our committee meetings into one evening, and if necessary, could we reduce those by a half an hour? I do believe the committees do their due diligence in bringing issues forward and having robust conversations. I do not believe that we are a less transparent. I think we have seen a huge increase in transparency of what we do. I do know that when we attend other meetings in our township, you know, the cameras are in the back of the room to capture what is happening in the entire room. So I don't know why the camera use is an issue of transparency. We record our meetings, we have them livestreamed, and they're up on our website. They are on YouTube that is downloadable. I think that was brought to our attention and was questioned at a previous meeting and was explained. They are on YouTube currently because of the server issue that we had, and any video from YouTube is downloadable. Is there anybody else wishing to address the board?
Vanessa Forrest, Monroe Township. I just have a couple of questions about, okay, so how do ethics complaints affect the budget?
Is this on the agenda?
Does it, is it already built into the budget for the cost of defense or whatever? Because I know that when we have an ethics, it's like $5,000, $5,000. And then is it billable hours after that to handle the situation?
We have, our budget includes line items, correct, Ms. Allen, for legal fees?
Correct.
So it's like, it's already built in?
That's part of the budget. We budget for legal fees.
Okay.
Insurance fees.
And we're billed, and it's billed like billable hours? It's not like when there's an ethics complaint, it's just not one cost, it's billable hours?
No, the complaints are sent to our insurance carrier, and there's a deductible. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak on anything from the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public forum. The next item on the agenda is our assistant superintendent's report. Dr. Lehman?
Sure. I wanted to start tonight by highlighting some professional development opportunities on the agenda. The one I'm going to highlight particularly is covered by Title Funds this year. Many of our harassment, intimidation, and bullying specialists will be taking part in an HIB specialist certification program. This opportunity for our staff, this is an opportunity for our staff to be trained. It's an additional layer of training and support for our already-trained HIB specialists. Not every one of them is taking place. This certificate program is a series of five different trainings, and some of them have already done some of those trainings, so it didn't make sense to have them do the entire package. So if they have something they need to fill in the gap or whatever, we'll certainly get them those individual trainings as needed. In terms of our HIB cases this year, we see them proceeding in a consistent trajectory as in previous years. We're on track. We see no more or no less in terms of our HIBs in the district. They're consistent throughout the schools. You know, our students are certainly learning, but they're also, they make mistakes, and, you know, we work with them and go through this process and support them, the offenders, the victims, and their families as we go through. Another highlight I wanted to make was tonight, tomorrow night, and Saturday afternoon, we have Shrek Jr. the Musical taking place at the middle school. It's in the Performing Arts Center. Tomorrow night's performance is 7:00 P.M., and then Saturday's performance is at 2:00 P.M., so we invite you as a community to join us in recognizing, celebrating, watching our amazing middle school students perform the musical. And then we have another highlight here. This was from earlier in the month. I did not have an opportunity to talk about it at our last board meeting, but we welcomed the return of an internationally-recognized band composer, Mr. William Owens, to our schools. Mr. Owens visited our district from the Dallas-Fort Worth-Texas area. He spent two days in Monroe Township. He happened to be up here for a statewide event, and us in another district were able to take advantage of his travels here and kind of invite him to come to our district. So what he did is he worked with students at the middle school and the elementary schools. The middle school band performed one of Mr. Owens' compositions and received direct feedback and critiques to refine their overall sound and technique. That's a very unique opportunity to actually have the composer listen to you play their music and then give you feedback about how they envisioned and thought about how that music was written and designed. In addition to that, he provided general music instruction applications. Mr. Owens offered students further insight and context into the inspiration that drove his creativity when composing the music that we've played from him. After working with the students, he conducted a professional development session for our entire instrumental music staff on the topics of successful vertical teaching and creating a positive culture. So he happened to be in the area, coming up in the area. Mr. Schneider was able to leverage that travel, and we could engage him for two days to really have an exciting experience. And we've worked with him before, and we're always excited to have him come back to the district. So it's a very wonderful experience, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Dr. Lehman? All right, the next item on our agenda is our superintendent's report. Dr. Chanley?
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Board of Education meeting. We have had a very busy week, as you heard through committee reports, and I'm going to highlight some of them, but first I'd like to go back to, piggyback on what Sehaj had said regarding the March month in which we celebrate Dr. Seuss's birthday in Read Across America. I had the pleasure of being invited to read, and I was invited by the PTAs and PTOs. I had the opportunity to go to Woodland, Mill Lake, and Oak Tree. I dressed in the garb, and the kids loved it, looked a little bit like one of Dr. Seuss's following. It was a lot of fun. I was able to turn a lot of the reading of the books into activities. Being a former English teacher, it was pleasurable for me to go into thematic, thematic areas in which we discuss different genres. Furthermore, I have to compliment our children at all different grade levels that they really understood the five paragraph essay, and we talked about thesis statements and topic sentences, and I was beyond blown away and impressed by how bright our children really are and how much fun it was. I also had an opportunity to go into one of our self-contained classrooms and read to our children and to see how important it is to have that contact and the socialization. That was taken to the next level when I was invited by the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Superintendent, Ms. Romano. She invited me to join her as both her and I read to the children at the Academy Learning Center. It really puts things into perspective when you have an opportunity to go into one of our schools in which a lot of our children do attend, and it really shows us how fortunate we are, and we should not take for granted. Simple, simple things like being able to communicate with the kids, children being able to walk, children being able to talk. And it really opened my eyes to what's important. I think sometimes we forget, through agendas, politics, whatever it might be, that it's about the kids. It really is. And you walk out of there just saying, "Thank you," and that we're thankful for everything that we have. It was an incredible, incredible month, just being part of these activities. I was able to then continue with activities as I was invited to the, what has now become annual, Monroe Township Middle School Health Fair. It is one of those culminating activities that we do where we invite in professionals in the healthcare industry from Princeton Healthcare, St. Barnabas, various different organizations come, volunteer their time. And it's something that we're able to do in collaboration with Jamesburg. So Dr. Valani and myself attended on the same, at the same time. Since I became acting and then became superintendent, one of my, one of my goals, one of my personal, personal goals was to really just have our Jamesburg students become Falcons as early as possible. So we would like to start sometimes in the seventh grade, but definitely in the eighth grade, to various different activities. A few years ago, they were able to join us on one of our trips, and now we make, in addition to being invited on the trip, we do invite them to come and join us at our hometown, because they are our neighbors, and soon they will all be one when they hit ninth grade. So it's very nice to see Dr. Valani there and some of our supervisors, as well as the teachers and the children. Additionally, as Ms. Gerby touched upon, on Tuesday of this week, I believe it was Tuesday, on Tuesday of this week, we went ahead and I accompanied her as she gave testimony at the Senate budget hearings. She actually went into details that she did share regarding why we're at a loss, how the funding formula has affected so many different schools, so many different school districts. Had an opportunity to hear, it was a very professional environment. It was a very serious environment. And we did request the $2.7 million. We then continued with that request when I attended the Assembly budget hearings, where I gave testimony specifically to the $2.7 million and change and discussed what the needs were for our children. You know, we could only hope that perhaps we will wind up with some money, but if you don't ask, you don't get, so we did ask. I'm sorry. All that being said, it was a very, very eventful week, because one of the reasons why we moved all of the, all of the committee meetings to one evening was because we were very excited to begin our strategic planning process. Our strategic planning process occurred last evening, where I gave a state of the district address to talk about where we are at with our programs, our children, our staffing, and so forth. And then it was followed up by group interaction. It was a great evening. It was absolutely, it was actually a little fun, and it was pleasant. We were joined by some board members, and we were joined by staff, administration, teachers, and of course, we were joined by some community members. The next one is on April 25th. You do not have had to attend last evenings to be able to attend on April 25th. So if you are available, we have a website section, just like we have for our budget. We have a section on our website that talks about strategic planning. Please, by all means, come. Everyone is welcome, and we're very excited to move forward with that process. Before I go ahead and ask for my approvals regarding recommendations, I'd like to just acknowledge our retirees. We have five retirees. Our first one is Catherine Turvo. She's a high school teacher of Spanish for 19 years. Deborah Force, our middle school nurse for 29 years, who I personally work with 20 of those years. Irene Barata, Barclay Brook School psychologist, 25 years. She's also been in other schools in the district. She worked for many years here at the high school. Patty Gendra is the Oak Tree Principal's confidential secretary for 15 years. And Sanislawa Gruska, who I also work with, was our middle school custodian for 15 years. As I always say, we wish them well on their next flight as Falcons on their newest endeavor. It's very exciting when people have an opportunity to put in years of service and then be commended with those years of service and move on to the next part of their life in retirement. So we wish them well, without exception. On that note, under a 10-member vote, under personnel, it is recommended that the board approve the attached personnel items A through V.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, are there any questions or comments for Dr. Chanley? All right, seeing none, may we have a roll call, please? Yes. Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Gorham?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes, but no on Q.
Okay. Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Just one moment as I find my nine-member vote. Thank you. Under personnel, for a nine-member vote, it is recommended that the board approve the attached personnel, board action items W through 18.
Motion.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments for Dr. Chanley? All right, may we have a roll call, please? Yes. Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Gorham?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next, under board action items, 10-member vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached board action items A through G. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
I have a comment, please.
Sure. Ms. Bora?
And I apologize because this was such a quick last-minute meeting, so I did not get a time to send my question. I'm sure you missed them. I did. But I just wanted to comment on the field trips, because we just had the discussion on the Hawaii, the trip to Hawaii and the cost that we would incur for the district. I observed that the cost for the DECA trip, the International DECA Competition, was $12,000. And I'm assuming that's the chaperone cost, because the students pay for their own. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there. The $12,000 is most likely the cost that we pay for our staff-
Correct, and that's budgeted annually in the high school budget.
Right, and that's $12,000 for a club's competition trip. So definitely not 140 students. I want to, we might need to revisit that discussion of what that amount for Hawaii looks like. Not that we're holding, we just have to be prepared for it. I have full support. I'm excited we are going to Hawaii, but we just have to plan for it well in advance. Because if this DECA trip can cost $12,000, I'm assuming Hawaii will cost more. And it's only going to California, Anaheim, California, from what I-
The difference is, the Hawaii trip, the chaperone costs are covered by the travel agency. So-
Oh, we get discounts.
No, they're covered completely. So our cost for the staff is the contractually overnight stipend, and then meals and incidentals as opposed to anything else.
That makes sense.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? All right, Ms. Allen, may we have a roll call, please? Yes. Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Gorham?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Under a nine-member vote, board action is recommended that the board approve the attached board action items H through L. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
I have a question.
Okay. Question, Ms. Bora?
Yes, the- Yes, the, the, Agenda Item L, about therapy dogs. I'm just curious, it's for Mill Lake School, what's, what's the background on that?
So this is the second time this group has come to the school. It's a program that their guidance counselor and their support staff have kind of piloted. What we do is before they come in, we make sure that their Board approves to come in. And the previous visit, those, those therapy dogs visited some of the special programs rooms, as well as some of our younger readers' rooms. And it's, it's something that, it's no charge to the district and it's a relationship that they're seeing what the benefits and pros and cons from both sides are as, as the therapy dog side, as well as us as a school district.
That is, that's really nice to hear, but can, can we do that in other schools also?
Okay. Any other questions? All right, Ms. Allen, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Gorham?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That concludes my report. I'd like to just wish the community and everyone, because it'll be our last meeting for April, happy and healthy holidays and enjoy your family and your friends as we have our opportunity to go on our spring break the week after next. That concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is our Business Administrator's Report. Ms. Allen?
Yes. I just want to mention, on this report is the shared services agreement with the township and again, how much we appreciate that from the township. So, under a 10-member vote, it's recommended that Board Action Items A through F be approved by consent. Roll call?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a comment, Ms. Gerby.
Sure, Ms. Bora.
I want to give a shout out to, for the Agenda Item F, I want to give a shout out to Tarantino's Automotive Service for donating for the MTSD Robotics Program. They're donating $1,500 in cash that this Board is approving. Thank you, and I hope we continue to see that from the community.
And I want to, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't thank Mr. Morale for his efforts and bringing this forth to us. I know that he has been out there heavily recruiting sponsorships and advertising in our district and this is something that we, as this Board, in the last couple of years changed the policy or added to the policy and actually allowed us to go out and advertise. Previous Boards and administrations would not allow advertising on our school grounds. So, you know, the Board recognized the bringing in our community to be part of our district and through that sponsorship. So, yes, thank you very much to Tarantino's and to all of our sponsors.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes. And Ms. DePain? Yeah, I want to thank Dr. Chanley for something I brought up to her a while back about the cost of the pictures. And she did go and I think with Dr. Higgins and we got a good price for the senior pictures and for the individual, and I guess individual pictures of the underclassmen. And we got a good deal. So, thank you for trying to bring costs down for our families, especially, I talked to Ms. Belko, especially us that have twins. We wanted one price for twins and I don't know if that was negotiated, but, or she has triplets, I have twins. But anybody that has more than one student, I think there should be a discount for that, but that's something, I know you'll try.
100%.
So I just want to thank you for, you know, fulfilling that. It was great.
All right, does anybody else? All right, Ms. Allen, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes. It is recommended that Board Action Items G through H be approved by consent. Roll call, under a nine-member vote.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All right, are there any questions, comments? All right, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Gorham?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes. That concludes my report.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Board President's Report. I just want to thank again Ms. Allen and her staff, Dr. Chanley, Dr. Lehman and all the staff who worked diligently for many months on putting together the budget. I do want to wish well all of our retirees. I want to wish a very special good luck and happy retirement to Patty Gendres. I met Patty when my oldest, who is now 22, entered Oak Tree School when Oak Tree was first built. She has been there for many, many years and she has really helped that school run efficiently and effectively as the confidential secretary to the principal. And I know the parents that have been there will miss Patty very much and I just wish her a very happy retirement. As I said already this week, I testified at the Senate Budget Appropriations Committee meeting, asking for more state aid. I was very disappointed that the Vice Chair of the Committee, of the Senate Appropriations Committee, is, is our direct representative, Senator Greenstein. I was very disappointed that she was not there at that meeting. I thought that was a very important meeting for senators to be at, specifically that she was the Vice Chair. I was looking forward to testifying and giving testimony with her there and I was, I was deeply saddened that she was not there, I have to say. I do hope the community will come out and vote. I know the administration is working on getting more communications out to the entire community. I just think that we all need to do our best, parents, community members, Board members, to get out there and spread the information to the community why it's important to come out and vote. And I just want to mention, you know, all, all Board members received the budget, you know, in the beginning of the month. We had ample time to look at it, bring questions to March 6th and, and, you know, ask questions. So, I, I just wanted to, to make that statement that we knew what was in the budget, we had ample time to ask questions and come here and vote this evening on the final budget. That concludes my report. The next item on the agenda is other Board of Education business. Does anybody have any business? Ms. Bora?
I'm, I'm going to continue to, on the track that you were on. I want to thank all the Board members, the administration and all the community members that did go to the Legislative Committee Hearings and Representative Monroe. Thank you for the time that you took out of your personal lives to do this. This is very important for us and I'm hopeful that there will be results. I want to speak for a couple minutes about the process of coming to this budget and I want to address Ms. Arminio's concern and also Ms. DePain's comments about her, you know, her views on that budget, budget didn't address what it was supposed to address. Yes, it was an ample time. I want to say that it's a very tight timeframe and we as Board members are expected to go through all that's presented to us and deliberate and come up with questions for the administration, question them on what they have proposed and try to change it if we do not agree. And there was time for that. When we met on March 5th, we all have had, all of us had seen the budget for at least four days prior to that. We could go line by line on revenues and appropriations, which is what I did, and I'm speaking to my personal process on this budget. When we met on March 5th was when we were supposed to ask questions of the administration. The public also had that line-by-line item budget document that they could look at and deliberate later on their own as well. But a lot of us Board members asked questions that night and that was our opportunity to ask for changes if we did not agree. And I, honestly, my personal opinion on this budget was that we were cutting more than adding. If you were comparing last year's budget with this year's budget, I had concerns on supplies and on some, you know, textbook questions, wherever we were really cutting the money and that to me was glaring, I did not see us increase the budget on any line item that was worth questioning. Or if there was one, I'm sure I did ask Ms. Allen that. This year's budget is maintaining everything that we have done in the past year. We are not supplementing it with new programs or new administrative positions as people are, you know, trying to make that the story of it. We are just maintaining our programs and our current staff, with the exception of courtesy busing and after-school athletics and clubs, which is considered over-adequate by the, by the state. And so when they have to balance the budget, those are the things that they can take out without being, without being said that they're not following the law. So each one of us had the chance, and I want to go back to last year's budget deliberation when, on the night of the preliminary budget, I made a request to the Business Administrator that I will not vote yes on this budget if we did not put in some money for Apple Guard. And between the preliminary budget and the final budget, that money was put in. And if you, you were there, the BGNT meeting, Mr. Take said that we used that money and if that money came handy, even though we got that grant and the shared service agreement, because we had that money in the budget, we were able to do some engineering, you know, work beforehand. So, we as Board members had the opportunity, I'm sure the community members who had the budget on the 5th could have sent questions to the administration in the email and questioned any line item that they felt was something that could be taken out to put the busing back in or to put the athletics back in and they would have gotten an answer as to why that was possible or not possible. I, as a Board member, did not feel like I was not heard or I did not have the opportunity to put these programs that we are now taking to the taxpayer in the budget. I looked, I tried to break through it and find an opportunity. I think the administration did everything possible to, to make it as, you know, as black and white as possible. So, in my opinion, we all had the same opportunity. We may have different perspectives of looking at it, but I, I would think that, I would only say that this was not right after I had asked them to change something and they did not change it. I had a conversation with Ms. Ratner also after March 5th, saying, "If you are not happy with something, we need to reach out to the administration now before the final budget hearing in the next week or two." So, we all have opportunities to make changes and it's not always guaranteed. We can ask and it may not happen, but to, to say that this is not right, but not take an action towards it, not propose a solution, is not right. We all have to, we all have to, if we are coming, if we are complaining about something, we have to add a solution to it. And I, I don't think that all of us are treating this problem like that. We are going out to vote on April 16th and I urge the community members, the parents, the seniors who support education, you know, everybody to think about what it is. It is $2.7 million. It's busing for after-school activities, it's busing for children who live within two miles and two and a half miles. Let's, let's as a community, do that, please, because otherwise we will have to, as a Board, go out and look for those $2.77 million because we are not going to stop doing this work. We were, we have done the work so far and we'll continue to look for that money, but I think $24 an average assessed home for a year is, is something that we as a community can come together and agree to do for the sake of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bora.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes, Ms. DePain?
I just wanted to make a statement, a disclaimer actually, for the remarks I made on the budget that was presented this evening. I wasn't speaking as a sitting or elected Board member. I was speaking as a taxpaying senior citizen. So that's where I came from with my comments this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Bora?
Can I make a counter comment?
Yes.
Ms. DePain, while I respect that comment, but you're also a sitting Board member who has access, closer access to all the documents and the administration with a phone call or an email to get clarifications, to suggest things, and I think that would be appreciated if you did that because you would then become a part of the solution. You are now on the, you know, you're not just a taxpayer, but you're also a person who works towards the solution, elected by the community members.
Yeah, but I spoke as an individual taxpayer, and I appreciate that.
I, I just want to make clarification. When we're sitting up here
Thank you.
And we're, we have a roll call taken of Board members, we are acting in our official capacity at this table as Board members. You, in the, in, in, in the middle of the roll call vote of that item, you were absolutely speaking as a Board member, in my opinion, because you were at the table and you asked to make a statement before you made an official vote. So, when we are sitting up here, we need to be cognizant of, we are here as Board members representing those that have elected us in the community and we are speaking as Board members. Mr. Gorham?
Yeah, I'd also like to thank the representatives from our community and from the Board who went and fought for our tax dollars, okay, and brought this up. The, the situation has really gotten out of hand and when you look at the funding that we get as, as a community in Monroe Township, it is really ridiculous. And if we were just even given close to our fair share, we wouldn't be having this discussion tonight. Okay? Our budget would be, would be fine, okay? We would be in good shape. That being said, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, we are in a situation where we have what we have, okay, and we are just trying to maintain that. We are not trying to, you know, add things or embellish things. And even with that, with inflation and all the prices going up all over the place, we fell short. And we fell short by $2.7 million. The average assessed home in Monroe Township will be affected by $24 a year, $2 a month. Now, if you do have a child in the school, chances are between clubs and extracurricular activities and sporting events, your son or daughter is going to be affected by that. That means that you're going to have to provide transportation or, you know, carpool or find a neighbor to help you like we did with sports when we volunteered outside the school system. But I can assure you, it's going to cost you more than $2 a month to accomplish that. So, you know, when we look at things and we get into a situation where, you know, a meeting only lasted this long or that long and, and we argue about things that are really, not really substantial, the substantial thing is what we have and what we can do with what we have. And I believe that we're really doing that. Unfortunately, we are not getting the help from the state right now, but we do have people who are going and are fighting for that money, fighting for the students of Monroe Township. And I applaud their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Scott?
I'd just like to comment on, you know, unfortunately, you know, I don't own a home in Monroe, I own a home in Jamesburg, but I do have in-laws that own a home in Monroe and how important especially the courtesy busing that people need to get out there and vote for this budget because, and they really need to understand that the courtesy busing means all busing to and from school for two miles within grades, grades K to eight and two and a half miles, nine to 12. So, you know, there's a lot of schools that are, you know, think Schoolhouse Road right down the road here, that's a rural road that's within, you know, within two miles of the middle school. They're not going to be able to get bused to school. The kids from Jamesburg, that's within two and a half miles, they're not going to be able to get bused to and from school. So that's going to put a lot, you know, a large burden on the parents to have to figure out a way to get their kids to and from school if we can't provide that. So it's really important that people get out there and vote and hopefully vote for the budget because it's not just the after-school busing or for sports or for drama course this, it's, the courtesy busing is really, that is huge for all of us.
Absolutely. All right, anybody else? Ms. Belko?
I just want to, I want to thank our retirees for all their years of service that is amazing. Deborah Force, I worked with her a few times and she, you know, the middle school nurse, it's a tough one. But she was great at it. She really was great at it and so she will be missed, I'm sure, at the middle school. I also, I just want to, I just want to say that it, when you're sitting at this table, you are representing the townspeople who elected you to this position and those that didn't elect you, right? Those that maybe voted for somebody else, but you are representing all of them and you can't have it both ways. You can't say that out on Facebook, you have to do this disclaimer, that disclaimer because you're not allowed to speak as, you know, when you're out there in the public, you are a Board member and you should do this. But when you're sitting at the Board table, you are not speaking as a Board member, that to me is absolute double standard and I think that that is, absolutely just blew my mind. So I think that everyone needs to understand when you're sitting at this Board table, you are a Board member and you're speaking as a Board member. And if you can't speak as a Board member, then you don't speak at all. And if you can't speak as a board member, then you don't speak at all. If you want to relinquish that ability and to just speak as a taxpayer, then relinquish your seat and sit out there, because I think that that's just unbelievable, that you, that that was even a statement. I, that's my opinion on that, and thank you.
Can I add a couple of comments, please?
Sure.
To to the point that you were trying to emphasize, I, the board was given the number, sorry, I don't remember it correctly, but there are over 1,100 students for sure, anywhere between 1,100 to 1,500 students, that'll be impacted by the courtesy busing, which is, if they're living in two miles or two and a half miles if they're high schoolers. And I also wanted to, to Mr. Gorm's point, it's 2% over cap. I want to remind everybody, the inflation alone last year was was hovering around 7%. So we have maintained our programs with a renewed teacher contract that that allows us to retain teachers, where we've given more than we've given in the past years, and we've still kept everything within 2%, except those $2.7 million. Because of lack of surplus, we do not have any surplus. Previous administration has used a lot of the surplus, we're out of it. We were warned about this since 2020. If you're looking to find blame and put the blame on the people sitting here, I want to assure you that this situation does not arise overnight. It has been, we have been leading up to it for years. We were warned this would need, be needed in 2020, and we, thanks to the grants that we got post COVID, we were able to tide a couple more years. But last year, despite the inflation and everything that we've done in terms of, you know, facility, you know, stopgap projects and everything with the inflation, we've still had just this $2.7 million, which I wish we had a magic wand in the surplus to do it, but we don't. It's $24 per household, and given everything, you know, given the current economic situations, I I urge the taxpayers to look at the budget again, to see and convince themselves of how fiscally responsible it is, and we're only looking at $2 per household per month for an average assessed home, to be able to give our children courtesy busing, to continue our excellent athletic program, because you were right, Mr. Payne, when you went, came up and said that. How many kids will be able to do that? How many parents will be able to drive their kids to the games or to their club competitions every day? They're working parents, they will not be able to do that. So there'll be a lot of kids dropping out of those programs. And that impacts the Monroe that we know. You know, our sports and our extracurriculars define our school spirit just as much as our academic excellence. So I urge everybody to do their research. Please show up on April 16 to vote for our students. Thank you.
And one other thing, as well as the inflation, I know that we did receive less aid this year than we had anticipated. I think we had anticipated getting $1.5 million, and we only received $1 million. So it was, it was that blow as well with the the less, the less aid that we had gotten. Something interesting is that, you know, the legislators have put together a bill that they're trying to push through very quickly right now, where districts that were affected by the S2 legislation, which reduced their amount of state aid, because they should not have been getting that amount of aid for that long. And what S2 did was decreased it over time to the, to the, to where they should have been with the formula, with the formula calculation. So now districts are petitioning for the ability to go over the 2% cap without going out to their voters.
Only S2.
Only S2 districts affected by S2. And Dr. Chanley and I had a conversation with the superintendent of South Brunswick, and he had said, you know, he was there, and he said he was very confident that this legislation will probably get through, and he was there to speak again about this legislation. And I turned to him and I said, well, that doesn't help Monroe. I said, it's really not fair that this is only going to help districts who were overfunded, and now the state is taking back the money. I said, but we've never gotten the funding that we we should have in the first place. And, you know, now we have all of this that we are asking our community to please come out and support, but it's an unknown of of what's going to happen on April 16, where the legislators are getting ready to put forth this bill to allow other districts like South Brunswick to go over their cap and not bring it to their voters. And when he, you know, he mentioned about the aid that they lost, I said, you lost aid, but you still get more than we get. And he, and he kind of looked at me like I was crazy, and he goes, I don't think so. What do you get? And I said, we're getting 12 million. And he goes, oh, we do get more. I said, we know you do. So it's just interesting to, and and really frustrating, really, as as a resident here of Monroe, to see how the the state legislators and these bills really do impact us here as a school district and and the importance of getting out there and speaking on it. I I think it's great that these districts, if this legislation goes through, will be able to maintain their programs and not have to go out to their voters. But I had mentioned this previously as well, I wish that bill could have been amended to include districts like Monroe that just want to keep the same programs that they had in place last year, because for that, we would have, that would have helped us here. That's all I have to say. Anybody else have any comments? Yes, say hush.
I just wanted to say, from a student perspective as well, that this issue not only affects me, for example, a lot of other friends and peers that I work with, but also younger siblings that I know that I have, because they have a bright future ahead of them at Monroe, and not only no extracurriculars, clubs, and sports buses, but for the sake of like courtesy, our normal busing. I know I live pretty close to the school. It's difficult in the morning to find people to carpool with, and it's not safe to walk at all on the main road to the school. There are no sidewalks built for that to happen. So it is unfortunate that this wasn't included in our budget, but I guess just from a student perspective, I hope that the community, we can solve this together. It is unfortunate this had to happen in the first place, but I thank you for bringing it up, and I hope everyone comes out to vote as well for this very important.
And I would like to maybe task you with something as our student board representative. Take this information back to your peers at the high school and let them know that if they're 18 or older and they're registered, they should be coming out to vote as well. This is a great civic duty of ours when we turn 18 years old to cast our votes. So let all of your your peers know at the high school and have them also, let their parents know, and and really spread the word about what this actually means, because you sat here this evening and you heard the real impact of it and what we're actually talking about. And I know that the, all of the schools, the principals are sending out messages through email to the parents, but hearing it from you as a student and as their peer would be very beneficial. So if you could do that for us, that would be greatly appreciated too as our rep.
I surely will. Thank you for all the encouragement, and I have learned a lot by sitting at this meeting today. It affects us, the students, too, so.
It sure does. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Right, seeing none. The next item on our agenda is our public forum. Anybody wishing to speak to the board, please come up. You have four minutes. Please state your name and municipality. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is David Schreger, Hamilton, New Jersey. I am vice president of Unidad Latina Nocia in New Jersey. It's an immigrant rights organization, and I come here to recommend that Michelle Scott be removed from, as the representative for Jamesburg on this board, based on the remarks that are attributed to her on on Facebook. Now, I don't know Ms. Scott, I don't know if she's a racist, but if the statements attributed to her are accurate, the statements themselves are racist, talking about an infiltration of immigrants, this is, this is not good. I, I was born in the USA, but my wife is from Columbia. She's an immigrant. She came here in 2003, along with my stepson and my stepdaughter. None of them spoke English. Today, my stepdaughter has a BSN from Felician University, she is an RN. My stepson is a doctor of pharmacy. They are productive members of society. Now, so I was born in the USA, that doesn't give, make me morally superior to my wife, who was born in Columbia. It's an accident of birth. And the types of remarks that that I read that are attributed to Ms. Scott are dangerous for immigrants. They they can, hateful words can lead to hateful actions and violence. And I don't think that we want hate, we don't want violence towards the immigrants, their children that go to our schools. So I would, I would, I was, I'm 71 years old, I was born in 1952. That's two years before Brown versus Board of Education. It's before the Montgomery Bus Boycott. It's, it's when, when I was born, segregated lunch counters and whites-only bathrooms were were in in the Jim Crow South. Now, there may be some people in society today that think that those were the good old days, but we are not going back. We are not going back. So I thank you for your time. No vamos para atrás, siempre adelante. Thank you.
Buenas noches para todos.
Good evening, everyone. I will be translating for her.
Mi nombre es Guadalupe Castro, soy residente de Jamesburg.
My name is Guadalupe Castro. I am a resident of Jamesburg.
Yo como vengo aquí como madre y residente de Jamesburg porque a expresar mi molesta y molestia a inquietud.
I'm here to express my concerns and a lot of my, and a lot of my concerns.
Ante unos comentarios sobre la señora Scott y el señor Peter.
Against the social media comments from Ms. Michelle Scott and Peter.
Que han publicado en las redes sociales.
That have been commented on on our social media.
Y que la señora Michelle ha hablado sobre el racismo hacia nuestra comunidad de Jamesburg.
And she has spoken against our community in Jamesburg.
Y nosotros como residentes de Jamesburg no podemos permitir comentarios racistas.
And as a resident of Jamesburg, I cannot accept that these racist comments be said about our community.
Porque eso incita a la desigualdad y crea violencia.
This incites inequalities and also incites that we have hatred and violence.
Y ella como miembro de la junta de educación de Jamesburg.
And she is a member of the Board of Jamesburg Education.
Creemos que no es la persona indicada para representarnos aquí en Monroe.
And we also believe that as a representative here, she is not the person that should be indicated that represents our Jamesburg community.
Porque esos comentarios incitan a los niños a que ellos también hagan comentarios racistas hacia los latinos.
These comments also have gone to the students, and the students can now bully the other Latino immigrant students with these racial remarks.
Y en Jamesburg no vamos a permitir el racismo y la desigualdad.
We were, in Jamesburg, we would, will not have these divisions, and we will not permit that someone divides and excludes us.
Eso es todo por ahora, muchas gracias.
That's all for now. Thank you.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Angela Ramos, organizadora con Unidad Latina.
Hi, my name is Angela Ramos, and I am an organizer with Unidad Latina.
Y estoy aquí en representación del comité de padres de Jamesburg.
And I'm here in representing the committee of parents from Jamesburg.
Y estamos hoy aquí alzando la voz.
We are here today raising our voices.
Porque queremos que la señora Scott no nos represente más.
Because we don't want Ms. Scott to represent us anymore.
Y ustedes dirán por qué.
And you might wonder why.
Porque ha sido una persona que ha lanzado comentarios.
Because she has been one of the people that have given comments.
A nuestra comunidad inmigrante diciendo que sus impuestos van para mantener a nuestros hijos.
That have been negatively posted, saying that these funds are, that these funds are given to support our children, immigrant children.
Cuando también nosotros como inmigrantes también tenemos obligaciones.
When us as immigrants, we are also taxpayers and responsible citizens.
Entre ellos pagamos impuestos.
We pay taxes.
Y por eso estamos aquí.
And that's why we're here today.
Exigiendo que ella también sea removido de su cargo.
Demanding that she be removed from that position.
Porque creemos que este puesto le queda muy grande a ella.
Because we feel that this position is not adequate for her.
Con esos comentarios que ella lanza promueve el racismo y la discriminación.
With those comments that she has made, it has proven that it's inciting hate and discrimination.
Y por eso también nuestros hijos sufren el bullying.
And that's why our children are also part and suffering from bullying.
Por eso también tenemos tiroteos en las escuelas.
That's why we have seen shootings in schools.
Y por eso también a veces hasta nuestros hijos pierden la vida.
And that's why sometimes our children lose their lives.
Cuando ella debería de promover empatía e igualdad.
When we are asking that board members and representatives promote equity and empathetic.
Y hace todo lo contrario.
And this is the total opposite.
Porque nadie es más que nadie ni menos que nadie.
Because nobody is better than anyone nor less than anyone. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Jorge Torres from Jamesburg. I was a son of undocumented parents. I graduated from high school, and then I graduated from college. And then now I'm a director of nonprofit, national nonprofit organizations that fights for immigrants' rights. I was the first Latino elected in Jamesburg, on the world vacation in Jamesburg. And I'm, I'm sick and tired of Michelle Scott laughing at us and taking this as something that she never said. I think everyone here saw the Facebook comment, and it's, it's racist, it's dividing our community. And I know she's going to say that she didn't mention anything that she says there, that she talks about, that immigrants that never pay or doesn't pay taxes, and that she talks about taxes. In 2023, according to the IRS, more than 2.5 million, million tax returns were filled using the IT number. The IT number is a, is a number that the federal government gives to the undocumented workers to be able to pay taxes and not to claim taxes, taxes back. That means that nearly $6 billion in taxes we pay, $6 billion in taxes. In 2022, Social Security Administration estimates that payments from unauthorized workers accounted for about $12 billion in taxes revenue for Social Security, that undocumented workers never get back. This is a serious comment. I don't think it's about being laughing about this. Shootings, 80% of shootings, national shootings in schools are happening because of hate comments. This is going to the schools in Jamesburg, it's going to the schools, the classes, classes here in in Monroe School, and students are here scared about these racist and dividing comments. I think it's about time for the board to take it seriously. This is not something that we should be laughing about. We don't have no political agenda, no one controls us, we are independent, this is, I live in Jamesburg, I own a house, I have a daughter in Jamesburg, and we have dealing in Jamesburg because of. dealing in Jamesburg because of every single board meeting, we used to have a lot of bullying and a lot of problems with bullying. We've been doing, we've been having workshops with parents because of the bullying that we saw, that our students, our kids suffer in our schools. This is real. Shootings happen because of hate, because of hatred. So I don't think it's about, it's just super disrespectful as a board member to be laughing. She did the same thing in Jamesburg. So Mrs. Scott, we are asking you to resign if you have some face, if you have some blood in your face. We have more than three hundred people in a petition asking for her resignation. And the other thing is that we're asking the Board of Jamesburg to revoke her representation. We don't, we don't feel represented by her. She's laughing at us, she's laughing at parents, she's laughing at taxpayers as well. She said that she represents parents of Jamesburg, she doesn't. So I'm asking today the Board of Education of Monroe, have an accountable. If something happens tomorrow because of hate, it's gonna be in your hands and it's gonna be on your responsibility because as teachers, teachers, parents, and students are super, super worried about these hate comments. We should not be taken as something that was posted on Facebook. Yes, sometimes we act as a board members or we act as taxpayers on social media, but it's also our face and it's the face of this board. This is the face of this board when you do something outside of the board or you make comments in social media. We should not just take it as easy it is to put a comment on Facebook. So I ask the Board to please, please take this in consideration. We will not stop because we are so worried about what's going on.
Your time is over, sir. Thank you. Your time is over, sir. I'm sorry, you're gonna have to end your comments right there. Thank you, sir.
I'm asking the Board of Education to take this seriously and for her to stop laughing about community members' comments.
Sir, I'm sorry, sir, your time is up. Ms. Scott, would you like to reply?
Yes, I would like to say something. Thank you very much. Jorge Torres, you know, you were a board member and I think you showed up about half the time because that's how much you actually cared about the schools in Jamesburg. You have no idea the dedication that, you know, we put in, that I put in personally, that all of us put in.
Excuse, excuse me.
I am replying to you because you want a response to me? You, the man who sat at a board meeting and said, "We need an African-American board member." Meanwhile, you were looking at one right in front of you. You are so ignorant that you didn't even realize that I was African-American? Because what, you think that we pick board members based on skin color?
Excuse me, sir. You're out of order.
First of all.
Ms. Arminio, I, Ms. Arminio, you're, and I offered Ms. Scott the opportunity to reply to our speaker.
First of all, to clear things up, as I'm sure this is gonna go on for another forty minutes, as it did last week at my Board of Ed meeting. The comment that I made was in response, first of all, was in a private group. It was not a public group, okay? It wasn't like it was smeared on some public page on Facebook. So everybody get their facts straight. It was in a private group on Facebook. The comment regarding taxes was not in regards to income taxes, but real estate tax dollars and school funding, as we've been talking about at this board meeting all night long on the lack of funding that Monroe gets and the difference that Jamesburg gets. That was where the funding comment came from. It was regards to the real estate taxes that are paid in our towns, which eighty percent of our real estate taxes go to fund our schools. Eighty percent. On an average home in Jamesburg, you're paying ten thousand dollars on a thousand-square-foot house. So that means eight grand a year that family is paying to support the school districts in their town, in a little town like Jamesburg. Now, the comment that I made, I didn't speak anything disparagingly against the Spanish community, other than I commented on the amount of illegal immigrants that have been coming to this country and the amount of illegal aliens.
Excuse me, we need to have order in our.
Illegal alien and illegal immigrant are not racist. When you come into a country and you break the law, you do something illegal. If I, if I steal a car, that's illegal. If I break into this school, that is illegal. So I'm sorry, I'm a law-abiding citizen, I'm a citizen of this country. I come as a descendant of immigrants that came over here legally from Lebanon. And for you to have the nerve to say that I'm a racist against immigrants, when meanwhile fifty percent of me immigrated here from Lebanon, you got some frickin' nerve. And that's what I got to say. And if you don't like it, too bad.
If you don't like it. Excuse me, excuse me. You're out of order. If you would like to speak, you can come up to the podium and have your four minutes. Good evening.
Good evening to everybody. Good evening to everybody again. I'm over here too backing up the remarks she said. Here in the, in the message that she sent, she said, we could quote it, she said, "Going to Mr. Tufano, going to try to be as precise as possible, but we're becoming overwhelmed by Spanish-speaking illegal aliens. Between the Dems who keep their heads in the sand and refuse to wake up, the slum lords, the slum lords who have renters with God only knows how many people sleeping on mattresses in a one-bedroom apartment, our one-square-mile town is getting taken over and people need to wake the F up to the immigration issue in this country." Again, those remarks, like everyone else is saying, is considered hatred and racist against, you know, the Spanish community. She did, you know, post it like she said privately, but again, it just, I guess leaked and went to everyone else, including students. So once students, I have students in school here in Monroe, and once they feel, you know, that hatred, again, like everyone else is saying, it causes problems in the school itself for everyone. And then they don't feel safe, they feel bullied. You have other kids that are not Spanish coming to them and making remarks the same way as she just mentioned it in the, in the message. And I mean, we can send it over to you guys or print it and have you guys see the rest of the stuff she said. But again, they are racial remarks and we don't feel that she could represent the board or take any decision makings when she has those feelings towards other people that the majority create of the community here in Monroe and in Jamesburg. And as a parent, you know, I do feel the same way as all the other parents feel. For her to resign or the board to take a decision and taking her, removing her from, from the board itself so she doesn't have any decision making to do.[1051.14][1051.14][applause]
Good evening, board members. I'm a student of, at Monroe High School. And as a student, I believe that Ms. Scott should be removed from the board member position because she's a racist, racist person. This is our home too. And we have the right to have education. I hope you as a board member, you take necessary action against Ms. Scott.
Good evening again. My name is Anna. I am a resident of Jamesburg and I'm also the director of Unidad Latina. We're a grassroots organization that fights for the rights of not only illegals like we've said right now, but human beings, right? Because we think and we know that we all breathe the same oxygen, we all breathe the same air. So today, as you have heard, there's a million reasons why we could tell you what has happened and why it's not correct. But I feel, deep within your positions and your authority, that there should be something that the board needs to do. In Jamesburg, I've also appealed to the whole board. We are petitioning for her resignation. She perhaps will not do it on her own because she doesn't feel that she did anything wrong. But that does not mean that the whole other community needs to continue to ignore this fact. This is how a lot of violence is created, this is how a lot of bullying is created, and this is how we need to take action. So I, as a Jamesburg resident, do not want Michelle Scott to be my representative, especially of my student that is my daughter that is in JFK School, especially not coming to Monroe High School in the future. And I also would like to have, and since there was a reply back, how will you guys as a board member react to this?
Is there anybody else wishing to address the board?
Vanessa Force, Monroe. And I wasn't, I had no intentions of addressing this, but I'll tell you that when I was a child in Jamesburg, I was a victim of racial violence. My mother was from Puerto Rico. I had crosses burned on my front lawn, they had racial riots. You can look it up. There was machine, people with machine guns on top of debrisies. There was, I had a police escort to and from school every day. And they burned crosses on my lawn because my mother was from Puerto Rico. So these things escalate pretty quickly. And you may not see it today, but especially when you have young people that mimic their parents when they go to school, because I'm sure it wasn't just on Facebook. I'm sure this is how she feels at home, this is her conversations with her friends, and I'm sure in front of her children. So this will end up in the school system, if it hasn't already, and that's sad. So she should step down, you know, and admit that she, she made a mistake, you know, and that what she's saying is absolutely wrong. She said that to go on, to give our hard-earned tax money to pay to educate, educate the children of illegals crossing the border, well, my kids don't get an ounce of financial aid as citizens. It's called the birth lottery. That's what I call it. Wherever you're born as children, it's not your fault. And the parents are only bringing them here because they're escaping violence where they come from. Okay, so, and then they come here and they get demeanments and, you know, and they're children. Okay, I'm done with that. Okay. I just wanted to say, in response to multiple Oprah requests, the district has repeatedly refused to release evidence that Superintendent Chanley has earned her doctorate. Instead, the district claims it has no evidence of the doctorate. And even if it did, the evidence would be confidential personal record. District Policy eight-three-two-one requires school district employees to provide the district with verification from the institution of higher education for the receipt of the degree or certificate for which the letters are registered before appending letters to their names. Why is she allowed to use doctor if she hasn't provided the documents? Okay, where we know in previous years, prior, it was just, she used it and it was false because it was in yearbooks where she said she had, you know, she was put in there as Doctor Chanley and she didn't have a doctorate at that time. Furthermore, please note that does not fall under the personnel exemption of this degree is the basis for Chanley's contract renegotiation promotion. According to the case law in Cavalcak versus Somerset County Prosecutor's Office, two-oh-six, New Jersey five-eight-one, parentheses, two thousand eleven, if there is a certain training certificate, license, or degree that has been obtained in order to hold or receive a raise, then the public is entitled to access documents that prove whether or not the employee meets those requirements. In fact, other school districts, including Raritan-Bridgewater School District, has already released a copy of the diploma of one of the school administrators, and I have it. Okay. It's outrageous that this school awarded Chanley a one, Superintendent Chanley. Once I see her doctorate, I will do whatever, you know, I'll call her whatever.
Thank you for your comments. No, I'm sorry, your time is done. I'm sorry.
I made my point. Thank you.
And I would like to address that Dr. Chanley has received her doctoral degree. I know I have seen it hanging in her office. I know that it was presented to our Human Resources Department. This board voted on the contract extension with the knowledge and the proof that she had received her doctoral degree. So that is another false accusation made yet another month here against Dr. Chanley. It is a false accusation. I'm sorry, what is allowable under the Oprah law is handled through our Oprah officer. If you want to dispute that, there are avenues to dispute that, but to sit here and claim that the document doesn't exist is false. Thank you. And anybody else wishing to speak?
Hi, my name is Richard Borbor. I live here in Jamesburg. She just lied. Quiero comenzar diciendo.
I would like to begin by saying.
Una frase.
A phrase.
Se dice que cuando se tiene, se otorgan los derechos a otras personas.
That when someone is able to give, be given rights.
Nos estamos otorgando derechos a nosotros mismos.
We're also giving rights to ourselves.
Y a nuestro país.
And to our country.
Es John F. Kennedy, ex-president of USA. Estoy aquí para, porque estuvimos chequeando el ranking de las escuelas a nivel nacional.
I'm also here to say that we were checking the ranking of all the schools in the nation.
El ranking de bullying.
And the bullying incidents in the school.
En el ranking, no estamos, no está New Jersey.
We are not in the higher rankings of this in the state, as a state.
Hay cuarenta y un estados menos New Jersey.
There's forty-one states without New Jersey.
No queremos ver a New Jersey in ese ranking.
We do not want to be, New Jersey does not want to be part of that ranking for bullying.
No queremos combatir el bullying. Ese es nuestro enemigo.
We want to combat and go against bullying because it's our enemy.
Combatiendo la discriminación.
Also going against discrimination.
Combatiendo el bullying en las escuelas, que no haya suicidio de los jóvenes.
Also going against bullings in the schools so that young children are not committing suicide.
Y ese es nuestro verdadero enemigo.
That's our enemy, really.
Nosotros estamos aquí.
We are here today too.
Para tener respeto. Eso es lo que nosotros queremos. Respeto para nuestra comunidad y respeto para nuestros hijos.
To have respect, to get respect and to give respect, especially for our community and our children.
En sus manos está que New Jersey no esté en el ranking cuarenta y uno de los Estados Unidos.
And it's your responsibility that New Jersey not be part of the forty-one other states that have bullying in their states.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1674.45][1674.45][applause]
Buenas noches con todos.
Good evening, everyone.
Estamos aquí como padres de familia.
We are here today like parents.
Porque estamos muy preocupados.
Because we are very worried.
Acerca de las declaraciones de la señora Scott que no son nada para ella graves.
Because we are very concerned with the comments that Ms. Scott made and we know that for her, it's not very, it's not a big deal.
Pero nuestros hijos en la escuela se sienten con mucho temor.
But our children in the schools, they fear all of this.
Por favor les pedimos a ustedes como miembros.
Please, we ask you as board members.
Y padres de familia.
And also parents.
Que tomen cartas en el asunto.
That you take action in this matter.
Y no permitan.
And don't permit.
Que personas como la señora Scott.
And people like Ms. Scott.
Con sus pensamientos racistas.
With racial thoughts and feelings.
Nos haga sentir.
Makes us, that makes us feel.
Menos.
Less.
Que todas las personas que viven aquí.
Than anyone else here living in this country.
Porque somos inmigrantes.
Just because we're immigrants.
Pero venimos a sacar adelante a este país.
But we're here to provide and do good for the country.
Gracias.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
Sarah Zeez, Monroe Township. Before the board president, Chrissy Skirby, became our board president, we had, our Oprah officer was also our business administrator, someone with a college degree who had lots of experience with Oprah, lots of training. someone with a college degree who had lots of experience with Oprah, lots of training with Oprah. And since then, we've, the business administrator is no longer responsible for Oprah and the part-time secretary doesn't have the credentials that the previous Oprah officer had and nor does she have any prior Oprah experience before she was hired. This sets us up for lawsuits. And I don't understand why we're paying forty thousand dollars extra for an Oprah secretary when, like most other districts, we could have our business administrator do it at no extra charge. So, I mean, this is fiscally irresponsible and to be fiscally irresponsible and then ask taxpayers to approve a tax hike, you know, it doesn't really inspire public confidence. You know, other districts have released copies of their diplomas of their school administrators, like Raritan-Bridgewater School District. And, you know, if a local district employee has a degree, and especially if it was paid for by taxpayers, it is a violation of the Open Public Records Act not to release it. Other districts do it. So, you know, we should be concerned about being compliant with Oprah and being fiscally responsible. And I want to know why the business administrator cannot also be our Oprah secretary or Oprah officer. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe when we created the position of a part-time Oprah officer, it was recommended to us by the administration because of the overwhelming amount of time that was being utilized from our business administrator to fulfill Oprah's. I know Ms. Allen has a very, very busy schedule and she's responsible for the finances of this district. And the recommendation was to hire a part-time Oprah secretary, who I know has been trained. So to sit here and disparage any employee, again, saying that they don't have the proper credentials or training is very disappointing and is demeaning to our staff. And I can assure you on behalf of this board that when we voted to approve that, we did our due diligence through the Personnel Committee to ensure that we were voting to hire a qualified part-time Oprah secretary. Is there anybody else wishing to speak to the board? Good evening.
My name is Steven. I'm a student at Monroe Township High School. I would like to not just to speak to Ms. Scott, but to the whole board because on behalf of all the students that I know that are from speaking Spanish country, we all feel offended by her comment. And it's not just saying, "Oh, illegal aliens." I'm pretty sure that she knows because she turns around, like she's not facing this way. She knows that that comes on her face, it's like she's facing her phone. Instead of paying attention, she doesn't care about what we say, what we think. And...
Excuse me, excuse me.
Excuse me, I'm talking, ma'am, shut up.
Did you just say shut up to the president of the Board of Education?
It was you that was talking.
You tell me to shut up?
Excuse...
All I have to say is, if you guys don't take any actions, on my behalf, I will not be attending to a school where we permit a person like Ms. Scott. Thank you, good night.
Buenas noches. Yo soy estudiante de la Escuela de Monroe de la high school. Nosotros somos de la Escuela de Monroe. Pensamos que su posición actualmente es bastante influyente tanto como estudiantes como los padres. Su posición es bastante influyente para los padres y estudiantes y para muchas personas ya que su voz genera impacto a una comunidad escolar como para estudiantes. Usted estaba formentando el odio y el bullying hacia otros. Eso no lo vemos de una manera bastante bien. Nosotros pensamos que sería mejor que su posición genere control, genere paz para los demás, genere confianza tanto como padres y estudiantes. Nosotros no queremos peleas, no queremos discriminación, tampoco queremos tiroteos. No queremos ver estudiantes que formenten el odio. No vamos a discriminar americanos como, y nosotros esperamos que no nos discriminen a nosotros por donde somos o por qué idiomas hablamos. Te puedes todos, somos humanos, no somos animales. No importa donde venimos ni de qué idioma hablamos, seguimos siendo humanos y queremos respeto.
So what he's saying is, we're from the Monroe School. We think that their position is very influential for many people and many students. And for many, it was inappropriate act science. It is caused by bullying and hatred of others. This generate several problems in school, science creating fighting and shootings. We, as a student and teacher, we respect our rights as a person because that is who we are. People regales of our language or where we come from. We are human, we're not animals, we're not nothing, so we want, like, we want to you, respect to us. No matter where we are, we just need respect. That's it, thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Good evening.
Good evening again. Joe DePaim, Monroe. You know, I sat in the audience and I listened and I watched. Now, the young girl, that kid does a good job every meeting, gives you a report. Both you and the superintendent asked her, "Why don't you go to the school? Tell the kids, 'Get out and vote, help us out, look what we might lose.'" Now, you just had some people come up, the one lady that came up, the superintendent, if she could have ripped her water bottle, she would. She crumbled it and couldn't rip it, so she put it on the table. But you just had some students come up from the same school that she goes to. So if we're going to do a civics class right now, you should say, "Okay, I'm going to take this under consideration and we're going to do this right now. We're going to ask the lady to step down in the best interest of the future of the school and the town because you don't want to be on the front page and you don't want the reporters here." I'm seventy-one. I went to high school, New Brunswick High School, during the riots. And you know who we had there every day? We had the reporters, we had the state police, we had the police. Your director of security, his father was a captain then. He was in charge of all his guys. You don't want to go to school like that because it's not a good environment. So, just like you told this girl, let's do the right thing, why don't you just say for this group of the audience and you young kids, took them a lot of courage to come up here, you know, the one boy that spoke. I forgot most of the Spanish I learned in high school. Hopefully, he was talking about, you know, the Yankees and with Soto and everything like that. Don't know what he was saying, but he got the point across. You guys should do all the same thing, you know. I would side with any of you if you were getting ten thousand dollars a year to do this, but you're getting zippo and a lot of flak. So it's not that hard to say, "Let's take a vote, here or near, and just get it done."
Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public forum. And I am going to thank everybody for coming here this evening and speaking and having your voices heard. That is part of our great freedom here in the United States. There is no place in our community for racism. And I did hear and appreciate the students coming here and speaking this evening. If you don't feel safe in your schools and you are being bullied, I would suggest that you please go down to your counselors, please have conversations with the administration and let them help you. There is no, it is not okay for anybody to be bullied for any reason in our schools. I do want to make this statement. We as board members cannot take a vote to throw anybody off of our board. There is a state procedure for that. Ms. Scott is a representative of the Jamesburg Board of Education. The residents of Jamesburg elected her to sit on the Jamesburg Board of Education. Jamesburg Board of Education selected Ms. Scott to come here and be our representative. The Monroe Township Board of Education does not have a say in who is sent from Jamesburg. I know this because I had requested in the past, many, many years ago, a change in a Jamesburg representative when I was in the public and many of us felt that the Jamesburg representative was not fulfilling his responsibilities. And I was told that that is not a Monroe Township resident's responsibility to ask Jamesburg who to send. And it certainly is not the Monroe Township Board of Education's, in our purview, to ask for a specific representative. So I do hear you and I do appreciate you coming and making your concerns voiced here. I would say you would need, you should, and it sounds like you did, bring your concerns to the Jamesburg Board of Education. Unfortunately, our board is not, it is not lawful for us to take a vote this evening to unseat any Board of Education member. That is not what we are legally allowed to do. Correct, Mr. Gagliardi?
That is correct.
So thank you all for coming out here and again to our students. Thank you for being brave enough to come up to the podium and share your concerns. And we in this community do not support racism, bullying, or anything of that nature. If you do feel like you are being bullied or targeted, please reach out to your school counselors and bring that to their attention. And I know our schools have bullying coordinators and many counselors here at the high school that would absolutely help you in any concerns that you have. With that, our next scheduled Board of Education meeting is on April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you and good night. Our meeting is adjourned.